There we go, boom! We are live, what is up Lit Squad? Let me check the audio real quick, make sure it's nice and fine. I turned it up a bit, I just don't want it to get distorted on ya. Alright, this is gonna be a special one, so... I've got a little bit of evidence to review, not a whole lot today. Did not go as planned, so some things came up, some things came up late last night and today. So I wasn't able to get as much reviewed as I wanted. However, there is something that we need to address. And here, let me listen to this real quick. It sounds great, alright, it's perfect, it's absolutely perfect. Let's go ahead and unmute the desktop audio, blam! Alright, here we go. Let me get some shoutouts in here real quick, whoa, whoa, whoa. Hold up, hold up! I'm trying to get the chat popped out, and it's not loading, alright, come on. What's wrong with ya? It's just not letting me pop that out, alright, let's try it from here. There we go. We got it, we got the chat, guys, it's important to have the chat. Oh wow, it's froze, that's not good. So we're gonna review a little bit of evidence, mainly from the Hales Bar Dam videos. There is one thing I'm gonna review with you guys that will require Mixcraft, and I'm gonna go into that and how I filter for EVPs and stuff. However... However, Mr. Joe Vital filters his audio, it creates a ton of voice sounding stuff, and I've heard a few... Few pretty clear... Pretty clear EVPs in his... In his audio from the videos he took from the dam. So what I'm gonna do is go over those, plus we're gonna go over some of the parts of the livestream. We're gonna start with that, actually, we're gonna start with the livestream stuff. It's gonna be ultra lit. There he is, Mr. Joe Vital, he's famous. Alright, let's get it going. A lot of people hate the fact that Joe put up the middle finger for the thumbnail. I should probably change that, but Joe's famous, so I mean, he can do whatever he wants, really. Alright, there we go, we got that loaded, where's the second one? That is the second one. It's this one, it's this one right here, okay. This is the one where we made contact with... A spirit from the dam, and we figured out his name, which was really cool, so we're gonna go over that. Guys, I just crushed a bowl of peas and carrots, so my nose might be a little runny whenever I eat, and it was red hot, just straight out the microwave, into my mouth. But whenever I eat hot food, my nose gets a little runny. Alright, let's get them shoutouts in here, Princess Mel in the building, Princess Mel first in the chat, Princess Mel keeping it ultra lit, Ghost Findings TV, Siri Paranormal, Ally Skint Nurse, Rue, what up Rue? Siri, hey Siri, Sandy Wolflet is in the building, y'all. Don't get it twisted, it's Miss Wolflet, what up Bill Pow? Bill, what's up Bill? Bill's famous, Bill's ultra famous, Lady Death, CDA Gaming, Gwen, hey Gwen, Owen, Alyssa, hey Alyssa. I'm glad you all are here. Is about to be popping, Debbit, what's up Debbit, Shannon, HCD, Dumpster Dad, hey Dumpster Dad. Boopity boop, what up Boopity? I still can't get over that response, we got on one of the review streams, we did a session at the end of it, and we were asking if your Boopities, if you're related to Boopity, can you say Boopity, and it goes, "Boopity boop", just like that, like just like that on the manual tune. It was absolutely insane, absolutely insane. Still one of the coolest things that's like ever happened in the history of forever, no, I'm kidding, not forever, but maybe, maybe. Definitely one of the coolest responses on the Saturday streams. Yeah, let's see if we can get the Epic in the background there, that's a weird angle though. Alright, we'll deal with that later, so guys, we're gonna start off, like I said, looking through... This livestream. Also, there was a five-foot snake, which is pretty cool, can't wait to get to that. That'll be neat. Where was that? There it was. I believe, here we go. Yep. Alright, let's get it going, y'all. There were some stream issues at the beginning, like it connected really well, and then it disconnected, and then we got it back. Let's start right about... Right about here, let's just see what's happening, let's just see what's frickin' happening. Alright, here we go. Go over here. Get the properties on it, okay, that'll work. What about this one? Same thing. We'll zoom it in a little bit. Make it fit the whole picture. A little too much. Alright, good enough, boom, let's get it going. Abby. Whistle Daddy. Whoa, what was that? Did y'all see that? Whistle Daddy. It could be dust. But it stops at the doorway, which is really interesting. Guys, I'm watching this for the first time with you, I haven't reviewed this yet, I know what happens, but... I haven't reviewed it. Whoa, at the end there, did y'all hear that? Hold up, we got an EVP! I fixed him! Check it out, wait, where's it at? Something like that, I don't know, hold on, hold it, let's slow it down a little bit, let's listen to it slowed down. It sounds like "I fixed dumb". I don't know, alright, let's keep going, let's keep it moving. CDA Gaming, what up CDA? Andrew Cox, Crimson River, is the Joe Vital here? Truth Paranormal, AKA Joe Vital. He gives the bird, he don't care, he's famous. Dark Angel straight kicking it with the crew. That was my flashlight, guys, don't get it twisted, that wasn't though, up there, that could have been a bug though. Not that, it's flashlight, and then this. That looked like, that looked like the flight pattern of a bug, that's my, that's a bug. Jinx past Eric. Uh oh, walking in front of the camera. Ooh, this is so good, perfect spot, y'all, perfect spot. Also, look out for the snake, cuz this is the exact area the snake was when we came back to this spot. So, in theory, there could be a snake slithering around here and I wouldn't be seeing it. So do you hear that in the background, that? That was frickin' birds, birds going nuts, non-stop in there, and I don't know why, they were in the main boat shed part, and they were just going absolute bananas. G-Man, what up G-Man? Paranormal Voice Jane? Well, I hear Eric after that. Oh yeah, listen to that, right afterwards. Right there. Whoa, is that a mist? What is that, is that dust or is that a mist? Look at that! Whoa, we gotta get some shoutouts up in this piece. Alright, so we're giving some shoutouts, we'll skip forward, that looks like a creepy face right there. What was that on the side there? Me, maybe? Davy Crockett in the building, what up Davy? Was that it, was that the "I'm the same person"? Alright, that's my reflection, I believe. Whoa, that was a straight voice, let's listen. You better keep it. That "better keep it" is clear, that's clear. Outback? What up Pops, y'all hear that "better keep it"? That is clear, that is ultra clear. There's a two syllable, I thought I asked questions during that. Mr. Gamble, can you hear me? Whoa, hey, why am I not noticing that? I hear "I need" very clearly. Kesslet! Kesslet, hey! I, I, this is on a huge delay, so I don't know if you'll hear me saying hey, but Kesslet, you're awesome, we miss you, we can't wait till you're back, all the time. Kesslet. It's not the same without you, Kesslet, you are frickin' awesome. Koust, what up Koust? I'm freaked out, y'all, I'm freaked out. Alright guys, I've made the decision, we're gonna go further into the... This is where it gets lit, this is where it gets lit! Yeah, you, you, tho- those noises, oh, it's, the volume's not all the way up, guys, I'm so sorry. Is that better? What's wrong with me? Yeah, those birds were just going naught, listen. Hear that? What's up with them birds? Joe Vital, what's going on with them birds? At Hales Bar Dam. Oh yeah, guys, I forgot to share this out. How am I gonna do that? Maybe on the cellphone? Let's see if we can explore a little further. I don't even know where the phone is. Oh, what? Yeah, that's the truth, because it's like nearly impossible, so... Alright, what we'll, what we'll do, I'm gonna turn the volume back down on this, I gotta remember to turn it up. I'm just gonna talk, I'm gonna fa- fast forward through it, but basically, what I have to do here is get the 200-foot of cable, and get it ready, get the box, the wifi box, which is plugged in by a super thin unstable cable, and there's no like smart way to go about, you know, moving it and putting it, it's supposed to be stationary, so... It takes this much time to move like a couple feet. Whoa, there was a flash. Boom, and so the area we're entering right now is the switchback. Usually, usually, the mechanic, the operator, the guy that's back here, is in this area or the mechanic's room, that, this is where like he stays. And his name, we have come to find out through this investigation and through Joe Vital's research, is AC Gamble. So here, let's keep going, oh, there's some glitching, always look in the glitching, guys, always look. Looks creepy, but it doesn't look... Like anything astronomical. Oh, that looked cool though, hold up. Guys, I just like the glitching. Something about it tickles my fancy. There's a face right there. But then again, you see faces in anything that has, the brain is designed to pick out faces, we're designed for connection with each other. Ooh, that looks like a face, like Thin Mouth, I, I, it looks distorted, AF. I don't know, it just looks, it looks crazy, I love it, I love it. Ever since that one glitch at Post Town, and that glitch was paranormal, like ever since then, I'm always been like very, very focused on the glitching. Ooh, I'm getting like weird vibes like looking at this. Look down here, it looks like a busted up face. It looks like a face right there. I wonder if that's Gamble? Hold up, let's uh... Man, I wish the frickin' play stuff would move here, let's, let's zoom in a little bit. So guys, this is what I'm looking at, right here. Wait, why is the mouse not showing up, there we go. Oh no, right here, my bad. Right there. That's crazy, that looks like some structure. And depending on the monitor you have, so, I've got two monitors here, one is an old-school monitor with high contrast, you can't really see the, the definition in the bottom part of the face, but the newer monitor, my HD one, it's got more brightness to it and clarity, and you could see like what looks like some faint eyes, that just, that looks cool, but guys, again, it's just glitching, and there's a very high chance that there's nothing paranormal about it at all, however, ever since that Post Town stream where the walls literally ran red, and the glitch looked like a little girl, and we, that was when we were talking to the little girl, and we could hear her with our own ears, like ever since then, I've taken the glitching seriously. Like, it doesn't hurt to just look over it and see, see what you can find, like it, again, probably not paranormal, but just really cool. And I'm sure you all have noticed that during paranormal livestreams, there seems to be more glitches than like any other livestream, so... Whoa, there was still a lot more glitching to go. Also, listen to this, so, on quarter speed, on .25 speed, all of a sudden you start hearing these weird whisper voices, I'm cranking the volume on my end, it's up all the way here. Like it sounds like little zaps, little zaps of... Ooh, like, like that, like it sounds like little zaps of communication. But again, guys, probably not, but it doesn't hurt to check. Alright, we're back to normal speed. Goringglitter27, I'm glad that you're here and I'm glad that you're okay, I'm so sorry to hear that that happened. Alright, let's keep fast forwarding a little bit, so guys, so far, pretty lit, what was that, hold up. I was just moving the camera around, okay, let's keep going. Let's keep going. What was I doing right there? Guys, I'm just typing some shoutouts in the chat, now you can see the delay. That was my flashlight, when you see that stuff, that's my flashlight. Did I say I heard a female voice down that way? Hold up. Guys, I just heard female voice. Alright, so something to note, there was no female with us on this night, this is the second night, there was no female with us. Alright, that was my flashlight, when you see that stuff, that's my flashlight. Alright, that was my flashlight, when you see that stuff, that's my flashlight. I just heard a female voice down there. Now sit back. Now sit back. Now sit back? Yeah, whoa. Yes, did you hear that? Oh, that's a clear yes! Yes, 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 alright, listen to that again, listen to that again. Paranormal Voice Jane, throwing it down on the super chat, just getting the litness started. That is right, Jane, you already know, Jane already knows, y'all. Jane knows it, Jane absolutely knows it, y'all. Seriously, Jane is awesome, also, can y'all see Vanessa back there? Just wanna make sure, yeah, she's back there, she's straight chilling. Jane, you are the litness, thank you so much. Excuse me. Jane, your, your litness is just, it's overcoming me. You are frickin' awesome, Paranormal Voice is awesome, and the chat's on fire, that's what I like to see, that's what I'm talking about, y'all, keeping that chat lit up. That's what I like to see, Jane, it's cuz of you and your litness, thank you for throwing it down, thank you for keeping it lit, it means the world to me. Let's check out this EVP. Danny Melwath, what up Danny? Listen to that, that's so good! I asked, you know, Mr. Gamble, and he goes, "Yes", like guys, that's huge, that's absolutely huge. There's been a spirit in this section of the dam for years and years and years and years, and no one's ever been able to figure out who it was. Then Joe Vital comes along with his incredible research, figures out this list of names, and then boom, I'm able to confirm that AC Gamble is in the switchback. Like, that's incredible, that's absolutely incredible, and there's a reason Joe Vital's famous, you know, there's, there's a reason. But this, this is just absolutely incredible, guys, I, I want to stress that as much as possible, because it... We actually are figuring out what energy is there and who it was and who it is. It's just absolutely crazy. Also, think of it this way, Mr. Gamble heard my voice and was able to respond accordingly. He was able to hear my voice in real time and respond in real time accordingly. That means that even, even though it is someone who existed back in the day, is, is what the evidence is suggesting, he's able to interact with us intelligently, which would make him, it, under the classic, under the classic classifications of spirits, it wouldn't make him your average like residual ghost, and it, it wouldn't make him... An intelligent entity because he's a human, like, I mean, it wouldn't make him a non-human entity. So he is probably in the category of stay behind, but even though he's a stay behind, he's able to inter- interact in real time, like intelligently, it's just, it's impressive, it's impressive. Did you hear that? Yes! Did you hear that? Did you hear that? Did you hear it? You hear that "yes"? I said "Mr. Gamble", he goes "yes". Do you hear that? Right there. Protect the something, I hear protect. Protect the something, there's definitely protect. Protect the thing, it sounds like protect the thing. Alright, let's uh, slow it down, I'm hearing protect the thing? Or something. Last replay. Alright, and this is important, guys, I'm asking, are you the mechanic? Right there. Are you the mechanic? He goes, "I'm the same person." "I'm the same person." Ooh, you can really hear it there, he goes, "I am the same person", listen to that. Boom! Something person, something person. Again, guys, that's incredible, we literally were able to confirm which spirit was there in the switchback area, and he's been there for a long time. Now, we're gonna get into some theories on why he's there, and there have been people who have been like growled at, hissed at in this area, there's been some minor attacks in that area. However, I have some theories and reasonings for it. But here, we'll keep going, we'll keep going, it's just, I can't stress enough how incredible this is, this is absolutely incredible, this is the product of incredible research plus investigating, like diehard investigating, so th- these two things coming together is what produces these kinds of results. Again, huge shoutout to Joe Vital for doing the research, for making it happen, and huge shoutout to Jeff and Vicky and Hales Bar Dam for letting us investigate. I just, I just love, I just absolutely love it, even with all the mosquito bites, guys, I've got over like 60, 70 mosquito bites, it's absolutely insane, but, worth it, absolutely worth it, for this, for this moment alone, all, all of it's worth it, all of it is absolutely worth it for this moment alone. Alright, let's keep going. "I'm the same person", he goes, "I'm the same person." It's so clear, it's so clear. Guys, so what I just asked, Mr. Gamble, are you the same person as the mechanic? And he goes, "I am the same person, AC Gamble is the mechanic that haunts the mechanic room." Guys, right when, right when that flash went across the screen, there was a loud noise in my headphones. Person, AC Gamble is the mechanic that haunts the, "I am the same person, AC Gamble is the mechanic that haunts the mechanic room. AC Gamble, I'm so glad you're still here, that you're still the mechanic, that you're still working, that you're still taking care of the place. My name's Eric from Epic, and I'm, it's an honor to talk to you, thank you for the work that you do. Holy crap! Another flash right there. What's up Amber? Help me, there's a help me right there. Also, there's a weird anomaly right here. Help me get him, it sounds like help me get him? Right there. Get out now? Is that what y'all hearing? Alright, one more slow down. About now, maybe? Sorry, I'm out, what's up lady? It sounds like get out now or there out front. Whoa, wait a minute. It won't be the same? It won't be the same, hold up. Guys, I'm gonna, I might run that through Mixcraft and filter it real quick, real quick, but I think it's saying it won't be the same. You hear, you hear what I'm hearing there? I heard a "you'll burn". Tim Cat, what up Tim Cat? What up Julie Dale, what up Julie? Cork Ghost Researchers, what up Cork? Corky in the building. Andrew Cox. From Mr. Gamble himself, that he is the mechanic that is in this mechanic room, like that is crazy. I did think he's warning me to get out, it sounded like he might be warning me of a fire. I do wanna say, so, originally, we had thought that AC Gamble, here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go big screen on this one. On this in here, originally, we had thought AC Gamble died in a boiler explosion, and here in a little bit, you're gonna hear us talk about that. That is inaccurate, that was actually Mr. Johnson, that was a different guy who died in a boiler explosion. AC Gamble died in the dam from falling debris, literally, falling debris fell and killed Mr. Gamble. So... Just wanted to clear that up, I do need, I need to make some posts about that, cuz I, in another livestream, I said something about it too, and that's wrong, he, he did die on the property, but not from the boiler explosion, he died from falling debris. Look at, look at this face though, this is creepy looking, look at this, what's going on on the, on the stream here? Do y'all see this? Look, look at that! That looks like some Creepville action going on, alright, let's go. It's me. I'm gonna ask him real quick. No, I just heard a voice with my own ears. Whoa, hold up, let's analyze. Guys... Guys, people, people have asked me, like, "Eric, why do you freak out when you hear their voice not on the recorder?" Like, why do you freak out when you hear it just with your ears? Because it takes your brain to a whole nother level. Let me explain. So when you hear a voice on a recorder, your brain understands that the voice is, it was already captured in the past, so you don't experience the voice when it happens, as far as EVP work goes. You play something back, and it's like listening to a message. Like, if someone called your phone, left you a voicemail, you play it back. You know, nothing crazy. When you hear it in real time, your brain starts turning these gears, like, what if someone broke in? What if someone's in here? That was a frickin' person. Or it's a supernatural entity that you can't see, and it's coming right for ya. It gets freaky. It gets absolutely freaky, especially in known haunted locations and locations with high levels of paranormal energy. It, it's a whole new ballgame. When you hear the voices with your own ears and they're disembodied, it's a whole new ballgame. Amber Lazater, throwing it down on that super chat. Amber, thank you so much for throwing it down and for keeping it lit and for hanging out with your Epic family on a Saturday. Amber, you is that litness. Thank you for being that litness. Thank you for continuing to be so lit. Thank you for throwing it down. Thank you for keeping it lit. Can we get a shout out for Amber? Y'all, look at the chat on fire. Hold up. Chat on fire. Boom. Wait, I'm in the way. There it is. The chat is on absolute fire. I love it. Look, loo- look at all that. Bam! I absolutely love it. I love it. I see Dawn searching truth in there. Oh, y'all can see the delay. So where I'm talking right now, John G just said, "Yeah, Amber, that's the latest." So however long that delay is, that's how long it is. Just want you all to know. JTF, what up, Ken? Just the facts in the building. Joandy, what's up, Joandy? Abby. I love the name Abby. What up, Abby? Abby in the building. Joandy asks, "I want a recorder. Which one is the best, Eric?" Well, in my personal opinion, the Sony Saint is by far the best. It does, especially for effectiveness versus price. It's, soon it's gonna be multiple hundreds of dollars, and even right now, the new ones went from being like eighty, ninety bucks. They're two and three hundred dollars now, brand new, but you can find them used if you're really looking. If you got your eyes set straight, you can really find them for anywhere from twenty bucks to sixty bucks used. The actual, uh, the actual name of the recorder is the Sony ICD ST25. I just typed it out in chat. Here's another thing, though. The Sony ICD ST25, it does require some type of energy. For instance, it doesn't have its own glitched-out, uh, integrated circuit chip like the Panasonic DR60. The DR60 has a messed-up chip in it that produces static and noise. It produces the and it also produces the Those are internal glitches of the recorder, and spirits are able to use that little bit of noise, similar to how they use a spirit box, and speak through it. With the Sony Saint, if you're in any environment that has any amount of noise at all, you will catch really great EVPs. Like this, for instance. Like, you can hear water dripping in the background. There's birds. There's enough noise. There's enough signal for him to use to talk to us. The Sony Saint produces some of the loudest, clearest. The way I use it is ultra noisy. You don't have to use it that way. They're, like, for instance, Paranormal Sean. He doesn't do the voice up like I do. He does the regular volume on it, which is less, uh, which is less noisy. I prefer the noise, though, because of all the EVPs, and when you get an EVP on the Sony Saint, it's loud and it's lit, and that's why I love the Sony Saint. It's the best, bar none. Especially for the money. Like, if you can afford it, get a DR60, get a Panasonic DR60, just cuz you can turn it on voice activation, set it down, walk away, come back, and you're likely to have something if there's some spirits in the area. You can do the same with the Sony Saint. It's just, the DR60 is more well-known for it, and it's more, depending on which model you get, I've seen some DR60s that don't have as bad of a glitching problem, and they get way less responses. It all, it just depends, guys. The Sony Saint is by far the best for the money. By far, the best for the money. Alright, here we go. Alright. Alright, alright, alright. I got Facebook Messenger up here. I see Joe Vital's blowing me up with some info. I'm gonna hit play on this and look into what he's sending. Dawn searching truth, throwing it down, keeping it lit. Dawn, you are the litness. The chat is back on fire. I, I love it. Dawn, thank you for being so incredibly lit. Guys, Dawn is a, a true Epic researcher. She throws it down. She keeps it lit. She's in it all the way. Dawn, you are, you're absolutely incredible. I can't find the dollar sign on Messenger anymore. That's no good. Hold up. Hold up. Let me double-check something real quick. Whoa, I don't see it either. Facebook, what have you done? What have you done? Oh, okay, I found it. So when you, uh, check it out. When you got, so here, like, here, let me go full screen here real quick. It looks like they moved it. At least on my end, it looks like they moved it. So here's, here's an example. You have to, oops, not type A. See this plus? See that? Wait, wait, where is it? This right here. This, this thing's a little plus. Can't really, there you go. You click that. And then there's the, there's the send money. There's the donate option right there. Mine's backwards cuz I got the camera flipped, but that is how it's looking on my end. There, there used to be a dollar sign, like, right in, right in this spot there, but it looks like they moved that. But guys, the reason Dawn's bringing that up is because the Facebook donations have no fee at all. There's no fee. They're completely free, and they go through immediately. Instead of having to wait forty-five days, those go through immediately, so that's why she's bringing it up. It's a good point. Dawn with the good points. Dawn with the litness. Dawn searching truth, keeping it lit no matter the circumstance. Always keeping it ultra lit. That's Dawn. That's how she do. That's how she roll, y'all. That's how she does it. That's how she makes it happen. So Dawn, you are friggin' awesome. Alright, let's, uh, let's continue our review. There we go. I'm gonna see what Joe sent me real quick.
No, I just heard a voice with my own ears.
Let's see if we can bring out that voice. Let's see if the audio captured it by chance. I doubt it did.
No, I just heard a
I think I hear it. Right there. Right there. Yep. Right there. It's actually a noise, but I think I mistake it as a voice. Also, look at this little black glitch dot thing. Look at this thing. It, like, it chills there, and then it disappears. Right there.
No, I just heard a voice with my own ears.
Oh, it's on the screen. It's on the screen. Okay.
Oh, crap.
That freaked me out. I didn't even see it.
Oh, crap.
Guys, again, when you're in the pitch black, so I, I can see the screen. I can see the tablet, and this is just a little screen on the tablet, like a little tiny thing. When you see that, it, in your brain, that, that shadow is actually in the room moving. You know what I mean? Because you can't see anything else. Ooh, okay, this is good. This is good. I'm gonna read what Joe sent me here.
I just heard it again real faintly that time?
Double check.
I just heard it again real faint.
Oh, I, I can hear it. Sounds like, "Help me."
I just heard it again real faint.
No, I think it's just noise.
I just heard it again real faintly that time? Holy crap, I'm sweating frickin' bullets. Sweating frickin' bullets.
Oh, man.
Holy crap. Is there someone out there?
Alright, guys, so, as you know, in this whole interaction, we're interacting with AC Gamble. Let me read you what Joe just sent me. This is regarding the incident. And let's just, let's just read it real quick. Actually, you know what? I got an idea. Let's do this. Put me here. Let's let this run in the background on low volume. Check it out. "A failing Derrick," or no, excuse me, "A falling Derrick at the Lock and Dam Saturday morning crushed out the lives of two men. One of them, one of them white." This is, what year is this printed in? Nineteen twelve? So there was still a lot of racial tension then. "AC Gamble of Cincinnati and Richard Moran, a black man, are the dead men. Both met instant death when a derrick on which they were working broke, throwing them to the ground a distance of forty-five feet. Gamble was working at the top of the derrick and was the first to see his danger. In desperation, he clung to a steel support and was carried to the ground. In striking, he fell under the heavy metal and was crushed to death." Man, you're making a last-ditch effort to make it out. We got a map. You're making a last-ditch effort to save your life from what you see happening, and when it all comes crashing down, you get caught under the thing you jumped on, like, that's brutal. That's brutal. I'm sorry, Mr. Gamble. That's, that's brutal. "Under the heavy metal, the black man, Richard, was sitting on a rope swing almost fifty feet above ground when he felt his support giving way. Quickly, he detangled himself and jumped, but he was struck on his head and was horribly mangled. Both men were dead when spectators reached them." That's intense, y'all. Alright, let's review this. Joe Vital, thank you for sending me that. Alright, let me check something here. Alright, so I was checking to see if we could debunk this, if it was my shadow, but it's not. The map clearly maps in beyond my shadow. Watch this. Let's slow it down a little bit, just to double-check. Yep. The map occurs beyond my shadow. Whoa, I heard a, "I hate them." It's very faint, but I, I hear it. It's, I don't know. Right there.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
How many times am I gonna say, "Oh, my God"? See, guys, it sounds like voices. Sounds like frickin' voices. Alright, let's keep going.
Mr. Gamble, is there something wrong with the boiler? Mr. Gamble, is there, is there a female voice talking? Is there a, a woman in here?
Whoa. Yes, something struck me? What are y'all hearing right there?
Oh, someone's coming. Hey. Who's that? Alright.
Alright, that, so that's Jeff. Jeff came in.
You about to freak me out. What's up? We got the, we got the livestream rolling.
So once Jeff came in, we talked for a while, and we were straight hanging out, and then Mr. Joe Vital himself makes, whoa, is that a map? That was someone walking away, wasn't it?
Talking on there? What are y'all hearing? I'm about to go back through this way. I wanna see how far the cable gets.
Alright. Whoa, I paused it right on a flash. Look at that. Look at that. Look at that. Whoa, that was a long one. Alright, let's keep moving. Let's keep moving along here. So here, there's, here's a good shot of Joe Vital real quick.
We gotta, we gotta give AC Gamble to Joe real quick. Joe did the research. Joe's the one who came up with the name AC Gamble. And last night, we got a response with it, and tonight, we are getting mega responses. He actually confirmed that he's the mechanic, which is just, Joe, thank you, man. Thank you for your research. Thank you for your hard work. Pays off.
We still got a lot of names to go through.
Yeah.
Look, Joe's so famous, he's just unfazed by my compliments. It's, it's like, "Joe, you did a really great thing." He's like, "No, we still got work to do." Trying to make Joe's tough face right there. Hold on, let's, let's compare. We still got work to do. Alright, let's keep, let's keep going, guys. Let's keep going.
If we can get one connection like that, that means we can get more, and so Joe's absolutely right. We got more to do.
The SLS on selfie mode, like, guys, that's no easy feat. I can't express that enough. I can't wait for the next Epic Wolfpack event, cuz I really want more people to hold the SLS and like, just experience it, cuz the, the name-brand SLS camera, the one by Digital Dowsing by Bill Chapel, it's super light because the camera itself runs off the tablet for power. All the other SLSs, like the ones with the Kinect cameras and my newer generation one, run off battery packs, and that adds substantial weight, plus the tablet required to run the new one, super heavy. So just the fact that I've got it turned around like that, I just find it very amusing. Very amusing.
That is the truth.
And we are the first. No one else has come in here with those names and called them out. Nobody. We are the first.
Whoa, look, a map, a map's about to happen. Oh, no. Whoa, what happened?
There's something. It's something with tone.
Where were we?
The first. No one else has come in here with those names and called them out. Nobody. We are the first.
That's incredible.
Yeah, that's the first to get the mechanic's name. I mean, people have asked and asked and asked. And, yeah, it's just, this is amazing, man. It really is.
We need to find out if he's the one who's growling at us and hissing at us, because we do get that a lot, especially.
Alright, Joe Vital, you're gonna hate to hear this, but I think that's your attachment. I think that's what that is. Because every time I've investigated with you, something like this has happened. Well, not, I, I don't think so at Posttown. I don't think you and me did the SLS together. But at the Bitten Farmhouse and here, we got strange mappings around you in this same kind of format.
The mechanic room is on the other side of that wall, and that's where we get a lot of
See, see what I'm talking about?
There was a map above you. That was, so we were, instead of mapping you at all, I didn't even try and map you. There was something above you. That was crazy. Now stay right there. I'm gonna set this down.
Alright, we're gonna skip forward a little bit, cuz we go a while without getting anything here. Whoa, is that upside down? That's, that's just freaky looking. It looks like it's suspended in the air, doesn't it? Did it just flip? What just happened? Oh, it just compressed. Alright, lot of nothing, lot of nothing.
This is wild, guys.
Whoa! Was that me moving around? Was that me moving around? Oh whoa, Joe, that's intense. Joe, I would like to hear about that, 'cause maybe, maybe we could figure out what some of that evidence that we capture around you is, especially on this camera.
Y'all, this is wild, guys. First time seeing this, so... This is like the room adjacent to the mechanic room, and this-
Look, guys, so, this is using, utilizing two-hundred-foot of cable to get this far, and I just, I can't express how, how insanely happy and satisfied I was to get this livestream and this portion of the dam, 'cause last time Alex and me were there, we only livestreamed in the tunnels. This time, I was able to hit a lot of the other parts, and it wasn't easy. Ki- getting a connection to the LTE tower was more difficult this time, and then keeping it connected to the tower was also extremely difficult. So just the fact that, that we were able to do this, the quality's really good, like, I'm just, I'm blown away, very pleased, very happy with the results.
Where Alex and me got that notorious click sound. That ghost click. Literally, a click from nowhere. A click from frickin' nowhere. Alright, this is awesome, guys. This is awesome. This is absolutely incredible. Right where you're all facing is where I believe we got the click.
Oh yeah, that's something I wanted to point out. This is the room, this is, uh, the room where Alex and me captured that click. And there's an entity at the Hales Bar Dam that is known for imitating things. Like rim pods and different pieces of equipment, EMF meters. It made the telephone sound when Joe and Alex were in the dam by themselves. It's really weird. And the flashlight click we heard-
Do I got one right here? I don't.
It, it just like, it was, it's like click, click. It's just so clear. It's such a clear flashlight sound, and it happened right by us in this room last time we were there. Andrea Hippie Cowgirl, what up Andrea? Shelley Bean Bush, what up Shelley? Look, I was so happy. I was so happy, right there. Gina Sparkle Pants, what up Sparkle Pants? Alright, we're gonna skip forward. We're gonna get to some action. Whoa, whoa, did you see that on the side? It looked different the first time.
What is that?
We almost got thirteen thousand subs, that's right, Owen. Whoa. He likes it? What? In my hand? In my hand? Alright, guys, I gotta use the bathroom, real quick. I'll be right back. I'll let this roll. I'll let this roll.
Whoa, listen to this sound. It didn't rewind, right? What's that? Hear them coming or something? Last report. Wild, absolutely wild. He, is there an issue with the boiler? Protect the something. It's like- Protect the blind? This is absolutely wild, y'all. This is absolutely wild. Let me get in here with you. Let me get in here with you. Amanda Bruce, Allison Chaplin Lit Chick, what up Bridget? Bridget Kohler in the house, Mary C., what's good, what's poppin'? Bryant, Briar G., Briar Goodrich. Oh come on, focus. Whoa, the camera's going nuts.
I was hearing some EVPs there. Who would rewind? I don't wanna miss it.
Winter Sky, Ellie Chickley, what's up, everybody? Why's it going so bananas? Come on. Protect the blind? Protect the blind?
Come on.
This is absolutely wild, y'all. This is absolutely wild.
Guys, I think all that's dust.
Let me get in here with you. Let me get in here with you.
Do you hear that? Weird noises.
Amanda Bruce, Allison Chaplin Lit Chick, what up- Hello?
Oh, we got some map action. Hold up.
Alright, let's, uh... Where's the box at?
What's up, Amy?
Alright, we can get over here. Look, guys, that doorway, right there. That go- that's what goes in the tunnel, so-
Gina Sparkle Pants, thank you for being here.
Whoa, hello.
Julie Dale in the building. There was someone. Oh, Mr. Burglar, what's up, Mr. Burglar? Alright, let's keep going. Oh.
That go- that's what goes in the tunnel, so, last time we were on- whoa, hello. What goes in the tunnel, so, last time we were on- whoa, hello.
Is there a-
Whoa, hello.
It sounds like a voice says Robbie.
Hello.
Right there.
Whoa, hello.
Some- a Robin?
Hello.
Whoa!
Whoa, he moved. Same color.
That was weird.
Are y'all even- Hello. Are y'all even see- whoa, he moved. Same color.
And there was a light anomaly. There, so it could've been dust, but there was an anomaly right at the same time that it disappears. Watch. It goes up, it, it's a black one, and it goes just like that.
Are y'all even see- whoa, he moved.
Right there.
Same color. Did you notice it stayed the same- Are y'all even see- whoa, he moved.
There it is, right there. And as soon as it gets- So, as it crossed the threshold of the door, the map disappeared.
Who's that over here?
Whoa, was that me saying "okay"?
Did you notice it stayed the same color? Who's that over here?
That, that couldn't have, that, uh, it could've been me. It could've been me. Do you hear that "okay"? That's on the camera audio.
Stayed the same color?
Right there. He goes, "Okay!" Do you hear that? Right there. It could've been me, but it does not sound like me. Right there.
Okay.
And look, right as the audio glitches out, it glitches out right after that EVP, and there's a little anomaly in the middle. Again, could very easily be dust, just coincidental, the timing, don't you think?
Who's that over here? Who was that?
Whoa, is it Fight Them? Find 'em, or find out? Find out?
Is there anything I can get you, anything you need help with?
Whoa, ju- again!
Anything you need help with?
No! There's a "no" on the camera audio. Guys, crank it, if you, if you got it, if you can do it, if you- Here, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna crank it for ya. I'm gonna frick- crank it for- I'm gonna put a frickin' filter on it, and I'm gonna frickin' crank it for ya. Alright, hopefully it doesn't distort. Hopefully it doesn't distort. Alright, let's, uh... Close, alright.
Is there anything I can get you, anything you need help with?
Right there, he goes, "No!" There's a, it's so faint. Right there.
Anything you need help with?
Right there. Breathing? Does it say breathing? I'm gonna start it over, real quick. I'm gonna try something, guys. This might not be the best idea. I'm gonna frickin' try it. I'm gonna add some noise suppression. I'm gonna have to listen to it. So guys, give me a second here. Alright, how am I gonna do that? Maybe monitor? I can do it through here. So guys, give me a second here. Okay, that'll work. Alright, how am I gonna do that? Maybe monitor? Maybe monitor? Do you hear the, there's a "help me" there. Holy crap, that's cool, but I can't, uh... I'm not able to monitor the audio in real time, but that is cool. I'll, I'll figure out a way to do that and be able to hear the video. Well, how would, how the heck? Alright, I'd, I have to do live monitoring? May- maybe I could try it. Alright, another time. But, that's cool, that's cool. I heard something in there that I didn't hear the first time. Alright, so this is the live one, so close that. Let's get back at it.
Look at that, guys. We made it all the way. I feel so achieved, right now, just being able to make it to the tunnel entrance, 'cause that, that's as far as we could go last time. Like, when we were last here.
Whoa, hold up. My internet's dropping. What just happened? Alright, I'm gonna disconnect my phone, real quick. The internet just dropped dramatically. Are we still connected? Hello?
Other than we've gone, like, last night or earlier today, I can't believe I didn't have the phone plugged in. Oh nice, just in time, too. Just in time. Oh yeah, we've got the EM pump and the ion box running in the tunnel. They've been running for hours. Is it gonna be lit tonight?
Whoa, whoa, hold up, hold up. Guys, are we still, is it? Is it glitching out real hard? What's up, Jackie? I see you, Jackie. Guys, it's saying that I'm streaming at, like, two-hundred kilobits per second. Which, that's not enough to keep up with the litness. Is it? Is it glitching out real hard? No, it looks good. It's fine. It's fine, brah. What's up, Jackie? I see you, Jackie. It's perfect. I don't get what the num- the numbers are lying. Oh yeah, we gotta give a shout-out, real quick, to our girl, Dawn Searching Truth, throwing it down on the Facebook donation. Dawn was able to locate it after Facebook has moved the situation. Dawn found it. Dawn's throwing it down. Dawn's keeping it lit. Can we get a shout-out for our girl, Dawn Searching Truth? Dawn, thank you so much. That is absolutely huge. It means the absolute world to me. Dawn, you are incredible. Thank you so much. Can we get a shout-out for our girl, Dawn, throwing it down on the Facebook donation? Thank you, Dawn. That's absolutely incredible. You're incredible. You're amazing. And Dawn is great to investigate with. Investigated with her twice now, and every time, it's been, every time I investigate with Dawn, it's usually active, and it's usually, it's lit. It's absolutely lit. Yes, that's what I like to see. Dawn catching the chat on fire. I'm gonna throw some in there, too. Boom. Whoa! In your headset? Do you hear that? That's what I'm hearing. Alright, let's slow it down.
What's up, Tessa?
Whoa.
What's up, Tessa?
Excuse me.
Heard one thing right there.
Look out at the end there.
Let's switch it up. It's been busting EVP for a minute. For a straight minute. Alright, that was my-
Also, I do wanna note that while using the Sony Saint, your ears become, uh, desensitized or fatigued really quick. You get used to being able to pick out the voices and hear them very clearly, but it comes at a price. After an hour or so, which is right where we're at right now in the stream, after about an hour of using the Sony Saint, you wanna take a break. And it's because of the frequency bombardment, but that's what you have to go through to get the, that amount of EVPs in that short of amount of time. Like, how many EVPs did we just review there in an hour? And that wasn't even all of them. We skipped around a little bit. So, it's definitely, definitely a trade-off. I mean, you get a lot of good communication, but you do- I mean, you get a lot of good communication, but you do sacrifice a little bit of the, a little bit of the ears. Not permanently, just temporarily, just some ear fatigue, but-
My flashlight, that's my flashlight, sorry guys.
That's weird.
Here's the tunnel, y'all, there's the tunnel.
Whoa! I made it all the way to the tunnel? Look, guys, so the reason this is significant is because that's the furthest we were able to go last time with the livestream, was right at that door. Now this livestream, now that we're back, now and on this one, I was able to get all the way to the other side, through the other side. It's just absolutely incredible.
I'm gonna complete the whole circuit. I'm just gonna walk over here real quick and back.
And look, this is the very edge of the wifi range. The wifi box is literally at the doorway to the switchback, and this is the door to the, the tunnels.
Here's the tunnel, y'all, there's the tunnel.
Look at that!
Alright, didn't wanna disconnect.
Just a little-
Oh, it disconnected for a second, but it's back, it's back.
Whoa, there's the voices.
But it's back, it's back.
Really faint. Whoa, 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 we gotta give a shout out, where shout outs are due. Lori Hegwood, throwing it down big on the Facebook donation. Hold up, let's get it big screen here. Lori Hegwood, throwing it down on that Facebook donation. That's a backwards 10. Lori, you are that litness. Thank you so much Lori. That, I mean, that means the absolute world. It really does, and it goes such a long way to making it all happen. Lori, you are that litness. Thank you for being that litness. It means the absolute world. Can we get a shout out for Lori, guys? Lori H, throwing it down, keeping it lit. Lori, you are awesome. You are absolutely awesome. Thank you so much. That means the absolute world to me. Oh yeah, I think there was an SLS map there for a second at some point.
That, what was that? Where they store stuff in this area specifically. Where they store stuff in this area specifically.
It makes a noise, listen, it makes a noise. You hear that noise? It goes-
Something just went in front of the camera. We're gonna bust out no one MVPs on them.
JoJo B, what up JoJo?
Someone just popped through?
Whoa.
Just popped through?
Hold up.
Someone just popped through?
Nothing, okay, just double checking.
We want this something? Guys, look at the map for a second, right there. Right there. They're waving, hello?
So guys, this is, this is weird and significant at the same time, which is, which is strange, but it maps on this, this, the, this pile of objects here, which could indicate a false map, but then it moves.
This something? Guys, look at the map for a second, right there. Right there, right there.
And he's waving.
Hello? Hello? I see you waving, I'm waving back. Who's in there?
What's up Conflight?
Are you okay? It looks like you're lying on the floor.
Looks like he's in pain, don't it?
Are you lying on the floor?
Sounds like a voice. Super faint voice right there, listen, it's faint.
That's how my camera's seeing you.
Too faint, too faint. Whoa!
There's a flash. Oh, whoa, whoa. Whoa, there's a flash, oh-
I just noticed, look, he started coming out of the room at that point. Looks, at this point, he's still completely in the room. Look at this. The camera's registering him as completely in the room. And then watch, and then watch. He, his legs start to stick out of the room.
Are you lying on the floor?
Right there, he starts coming out of the room. He's getting closer, he's getting closer.
That's how my camera-
Right there, and then look, he's really coming out of the room. Look how much further out of the room he is. Now watch what happens.
Seeing you.
Look, he's almost all the way out. Flash.
Whoa, there's a flash.
And then he stands up.
Oh, whoa.
Do you hear that? There's a voice. Right there, it says like, "Believe." Right there.
Seeing you.
Something right there. Also, we gotta get another shout out.
Oh, whoa.
We gotta get another shout out in here. Our man Andrew Cox, throwing it down on the super chat, keeping it epic lit, epic lit, epically lit. Andrew Cox threw it down for you guys, for the Epic family. That's what he said in his message, that's what he said in the super chat. Epic family, Andrew Cox, love you guys, and we love Andrew. Andrew, thank you for throwing it down and for keeping it lit. It goes such a long way. It helps tremendously. Andrew, you are making it happen. Thank you so much Andrew. You are that litness. Can we get a shout out for our boy Andrew, throwing it down, keeping it lit? Let's get some fire in the chat for our boy Andrew. Boom! You rock, man. You absolutely rock. Thank you for that. It means the absolute world. It really does, and it helps tremendously. Alright, why can't I, there we go. Boom, bam, boom. Alright, let's go, let's review this EVP. Everybody. Right there. Do you hear that? It's in there, it's in there, but it's there. Right there. Need some medicine. He says, "Need some medicine." Listen to this. Right there. Right there. One more time.
I just felt something touch my arm, something just touched my arm.
It's probably one of the infinite, infinite amount of bugs.
Who's that? I'm backing up. Don't? He's saying, "Don't." Blam, blam, blam.
What's up Joey? Joey in the house? What's up Lindale? Lindale in the house?
It's dark, it's scary, blam.
Me making fun of myself.
Imitation of me right there. Who just tapped me on the shoulder? Oh crap, I just rubbed dirt all over my forehead.
Nice.
When I was in here last time, Alex and me were in here together and you made this noise. Actually, it was louder than that, it was like a big press click. Can you make that sound again? We were walking this way.
Alright, let's go to the spirit box. Cuz basically, I'm trying to recreate the click for a little while here.
Alright guys, I'm turning my flashlight back on. So you'll hear the click, but that's me turning it on right here. Alright, that's me.
And the click that Alex and me heard was like one of the uh... Like one of the atomic beam flashlight clicks, like the, like the deep press click, like I don't know, I'll have to, I'll have to find a flashlight and show you. But here, let's go ahead, whoa! Oh hey!
That boat with the loud-
Dude, I, I didn't even notice it.
Man, that boat-
There was a noise right there. Right there. Do you hear that?
Man, that boat-
It's too far away to be me. It's too far away, uh, the sound's too far away for it to be me.
Man, that boat with the loud frickin' radio is back, back on the frickin' dock. Alright, so working it.
I didn't even notice that, frickin'-
Something louder then, to deal with him.
Frickin' thing. Oh, when you heard a nasty voice under my voice? During the EVP?
So tense, wet. I'm getting a calorie burn for today.
Andrew Cox, I agree. I think that guy lying on the floor was asking for help.
Drop on my frickin' head. Thankfully, it was just water. And not bird dookie. Okay, here, let's go.
Let's go spirit box.
Crap, that drip, thankfully I wasn't a little- And we don't know who she is. Is she okay? Does she need help? Is she trapped?
I remember, I don't-
Who's over here trying to get my attention?
I don't think we get anything here.
Who go there? Who be it? Are you bragging? EM pump from Epic. It's Eric from Epic. Who's with me? I'm gonna try a reset real quick. I'm gonna try a reset. Alright, we might have to-
Cap's in the building, y'all. There he is. Whoa! Watch what happens with his map. Whoa! Do, what? Oh! Ah, gives me bad vibes! No way. Look at this, guys. There's frickin' seven limbs on this thing. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Do you see that? Do you see that? One, two, three, four, five, this thin one, six, seven. Alex, man, that's not good. That's not good. I don't think that's good. I don't think Alex is watching. But Alex, if you're watching, I don't think it's good. Maybe it's just the ghost of a spider. I don't know. I don't know. But bro, I don't think that's good. Well, there's a flash right there too. Watch, right there.
Jeez, uh, been standing in this one spot, there's a big old drip and it's hit me three times now.
I heard it's getting lit in here.
I made contact with Mr. Gamble with AC Gamble.
Whoa, 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 what the heck was that red light? Did you see that? What? Ah, what?
It's getting lit in here.
I made contact with Mr. Gamble with AC Gamble.
What is that? What is that?
I made contact with Mr. Gamble with AC Gamble, yeah.
Alright, let's slow it down and make sure it's not like a reflection of something. Alright, guys, at first, I thought it was something on the screen. Like maybe Alex is holding some red light or something, but look, it, it actually fades behind his hair, which places it in the actual uh, SLS camera, which means the camera is seeing that in the room. Oh, it goes over his face. Okay, it could be a reflection. It went over his face right there. It could be a reflection of something. See right there, you can kinda faintly see it. Right there. Alright, I'm gonna leave that probably as, probably not paranormal, but it looks really cool. But then something maps right under him. Guys, I'm telling you, the paranormal is made to split your mind. So, for instance, you could have anyone argue that that red light is paranormal because of the chain of events that occurred. Alex walked up and that big spider thing mapped, and then that thing maps under him right after the red light. Like, so you could argue that it, that red light is definitely paranormal, and then you could definitely go the skeptical side and say, "Well, no, it's probably a reflection of something." What would have a red light though? Spirit box? It's power light red? The speaker's power light is green, like a yellow lime green, and it looks yellow on reflection.
Guys, we got EVPs and gateway last night with Gamble.
Yup.
And now? Gamble.
Yup.
And now? This is the room where we heard the click.
Exactly, I was asking him to do it again.
I'll just do one, just... It's actually more like this.
Yeah, it was that. Alright, I'm turning my flashlight off too, cuz we were in the dark when it happened. The crew says, "What up Alex?"
What is up, guys? That big fan? It's lit at the Hills Bar tonight.
What was Mexican like?
It was good. It was actually really good.
Nice.
I mean, Joe's was expensive, but mine was only six dollars.
Oh, I just realized that, that I was blocking the red flash, wasn't I? Alright, let me, let me show y'all.
This spot, there's a big old drip and it's hit me three times now.
I heard it's getting lit in here.
I made contact with Mr. Gamble with AC Gamble.
Alright, let me show you all that part without my head in the way. Alright, so you can still see some of the red right there, and that's why I think it may not be paranormal. I think it might, it could be a reflection. Trying to think of what would have a red light, but yeah. It looks like it goes into Alex's face. It looks like it makes a quick turn. Okay, enough of the slow mo.
We got EVPs and gateway last night with Gamble.
Yup.
And
Alright, so we start, we decide to move out at this point.
This is the room-
And this is where we encounter the snake.
Hey, Alex. Alright, here, Alex, will you do me a few tables?
I'm hold- I think everyone does. We can just do G-Man?
Look, Alex stays way behind for some reason. Look at this, look. He's like way back here. I'm already around the corner. I don't know how it even stayed connected, because I'm holding the Wi-Fi box, and once I round that corner, there's no way we should be connected.
What's up?
What?
Oh, it said, "Hey, Gwen." And Owen? JjG-Man? The JjjG-Man coming at you live. Because I haven't seen G-Man, so we can just- We can just do-
Alright, alright, this is the part with the snake. Guys, I gotta, I gotta deal with these bug bites real quick. They're starting to get on my nerves, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hit play here and let y'all see see what happens. I'mma let y'all see what happens.
G-Man?
Come here, come here.
Oh, it did disconnect.
Look at that snake, dude, it's huge.
Holy!
Holy crap, dude, holy crap. Holy crap.
It's just a rat snake?
Hey, 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 wait, wait, here, come here. Let me get, let me get it on camera.
Oh, yeah, get it on, here, wait, wait, open.
Holy crap, I thought it was a frame. It's recording?
Oh, okay, my, my lens cap's halfway open.
Jeez, man. It's not zooming.
Sorry, guys, I'm not showing you guys the snake.
Here, I'm gonna show them separately. Guys, look at this snake. That's legit big ol' snake. That's a big mo.
Big, uh, big snake.
Look at that, holy crap, I was about to walk right up on him. Holy cow. Don't mess with him.
Look at this, this snake is, I don't think we can get this. It looks like a... You know, like a, I thought it was a Rex, and it looks like a python now.
Where's he going? Yeah, keep eyes on him. Where's he hide out at? There's a chair right there. Someone's like sitting there, and there's like a snake crawling around him. Oh, look, he's going up on the ledge. He's going up on the ledge. Well, it's good to know that there's a large snake running around. I've always wanted to know that.
And there's someone right there.
Yeah, I'm still going. I'm gonna go for a little bit longer before I cut this one.
At the, uh-
That's crazy, y'all.
Interior, I walked up to one that was like hiding in one of the bunkers.
While we were there, or?
No, it was on the other bunk. It freaked me out, like, I didn't see it at first, and then it moved, and I was like, oh!
That's so freaky, dude. I'm so glad I saw that one, because I was about to just walk right up on him, like, I was about to walk right up on him. Right up on him. Alright, there, the thing's on the middle of the floor, so be careful coming through here. Whew, that was crazy. That was absolutely crazy. Alright, guys, I think I'm gonna, I gotta show you all the boat section. I gotta show you all the boat shed section, and then I'll cut the stream, but I gotta do that. So that's the plan of attack. Let's ju- let's just do it.
Jeff, uh, Jeff was telling me something we should try later. Have two people or three people up on the one balcony, and then send two people sneaking around to the other balcony.
Trying to scare each other?
Well, no, like, uh, I'll show you where I'm at when we're in there. He said you guys did it, and you guys could hear that female singing Mary Had A Little Lamb? And that since there was people up there, maybe it was-
Gwen and I, we were up on the catwalk here, and things just got loud. It sounded like things were getting dragged around. We were in there by ourselves.
You guys know this guy? He's famous.
Of course they know, dude. What kind of question is that? That's like asking if you know, like, Michael Jordan or something, dude. We love you, Jeff. We love you, Jeff.
We love you, Jeff.
I don't, did any of us snore last night?
I fell asleep too quick to notice.
I was like in dreamland.
Alright, let's-
Just take me a little while to fall asleep.
It's Famous Joe. In the building.
Was I snoring, Jeff?
Um, I don't know, to be honest with you. All I know is, I was having a hard time sleeping, and then I was out.
It's our boy, Famous Joe, in the building.
It's been literally over a week, or right out of a week since I've had these bug bites, and they are still driving me absolutely crazy. My legs are just destroyed. They're an absolute mess, and they've, the bug bites have shrunk enough a little bit, but they're still all there. They are still all... I'm not even gonna show it, because it looks super gross right now. Just put the, uh, the, uh, hydrocortisone situation on them, and it just, it's, it's a mess. I wanna see the snake, though. Didn't I take the camera off at one point to show the snake? Yeah.
That's crazy. Big ol's- Here, I'm gonna show them separately.
Whoa, look at all that dust.
Guys, look at this snake. That's legit big ol' snake. That's a big mo.
Look at him. Look, look at how the snake moves, y'all.
Look at that, holy crap, I was about to walk right up on him. Holy cow. Don't mess with him.
Don't mess with that snake, Joe Vital!
It looks like a-
Alex called it. It's a rat snake.
I thought it was a Rex, and it looks like a python now.
Where's he going? Yeah, keep eyes on him.
Keep eyes on him.
Where's he hide out at?
So, yeah, y'all saw, he ends up going in that corner. Isn't that snake crazy? Isn't that snake crazy? Alright, we end up, we end up cruising through the boat shed area, and you can see why it's called the boat shed. There's boats everywhere, frickin' boats. And this is the area where, up on that upper balcony, Ghost Adventures caught the shadow on Thermal? And I tried to show that.
Yeah, Gwen, owls. I am, the chat's going. Hold, there's a figure, there's a figure. Hey, there. Can you move? Can you move away from that pole? Might just be mapping the pole. This is just map-
Alex.
Man, she got me. Facebook blowing up. Whoa, Deblit threw it down big on that Facebook donation. Deblit throwing down the big twenty for Road Cash. She got me. She got the Epic fam. She got us.
There's a figure behind you.
Look, my hand didn't even knock it out. Watch. Right there, it stays in.
There's a figure behind you.
Even there, it stayed in.
Well, now, you're, you're, yeah, you smacked him.
You got litness, Deblit. You the absolute litness. Guys, can we get a shout out for our girl, Deblit? Throwing it down, keeping it lit, and making sure it happens and it keeps happening. Deblit, thank you for throwing it down. Thank you for freaking-
I think we do EVP.
It looks like a frickin' person on that mo.
What's that?
Did your light go out?
What happened, Jeff?
One of their lights flashed. Alright, which?
There is a flash.
Their lights flashed. Alright, which?
Well, was it just me that gets flashed?
Alright, which?
That's weird. It looks like just me goes out.
Alright, which?
Alright, hold up. We, we got, we gotta slow that one down.
Alright, which? Alright, which?
That's weird.
Play that way, so if I go this way, I'll be out of frame, and I can walk over.
Should I try and get him?
Whoa, no, just wait, just stay right there. Alright, we're gonna do EVP real quick, because we got a map right here, and it's a map across multiple depths and free space. Alex just lost it.
I always get confused with the, uh-
Yeah, it's backwards.
Behind the boat.
He's back.
I wonder if it's mapping this area. It might be a false map.
It's getting taller.
Let's see if we get any responses.
We're gonna play this back and see if we can hear you, and we'll, if we can hear you, we'll try again, too.
Whoa! You gonna find us? Are you gonna fight us? Hold up. Hold the phone! You're coming to find us? Right there, you coming to find us? You coming to find us? Y'all hear that?
It sounded weird. It might have been the birds, but- Right there.
There was something there. Oh, paranormal Sean!
Whoa, it sounded like after I said- Whoa, it sounded like-
Did it say F you right there?
Whoa.
I don't know, I don't know.
Whoa, it sounded like after I said that, it sounded like, "I need!"
Check in case of Lyme's disease? That doesn't sound fun. Maybe I should.
Alright, let's, uh, I wanna show them before the ba- So, does anyone have a super pack of the boat that's helping?
For the wife?
Alright, so beyond the truck, so up there, beyond what you're seeing right there, balcony up there.
You can't even see it. We don't have enough light.
Someone could go up there, yeah, with feature, and it's keeping it beast.
You can't even see it.
They got people.
That's Bubba Gump boat. Shrimp boat.
Right there, classic. Zoom, no. It gets all choppy.
You can kinda see it. You can kinda see it right there.
Can see it. Holding, guys, so he, the, I'm gonna die, and what act would, and that con once we give map?
He put his hand over his belly and he's like-
He stood up. That was weird.
Oh, that's saying, "Talk into this." Right there. You hearing it? Right there. Oh, it was Alex talking.
What are you doing here?
Alright, debunked. Alright, guys, so there's one more thing I wanna show you. Uh, there's a bunch of stuff I wanna show you, but... Oh, yeah, this was such a lit session, jeez. It was ultra. It was so ultra. Joe got scratched.
Who did that?
I just felt a pain in my shoulder.
It's next to your hair patch? Yeah, wait, what's this?
Well, I'm wondering if it's something was like-
It's a patch of hair.
No, but like that?
That's what I'm saying, like, is that part of the saint? Like, it was something like-
There's a scratch right there.
What the hell?
It's red. Look, it's getting darker.
Joe always gets scratched.
It's getting darker.
That just happened. That had to have just happened, because it went from pink to like dark pink.
It's getting darker. I thought we caught it on the camera better.
I just felt a pain in my shoulder.
It's next to your hair patch? Yeah, wait, what's this?
Well, I'm wondering if it's something was like-
It's a patch of hair.
No, but like that?
That's what I'm saying, like, is that part of the saint? Like, it was something like-
No, that looks like, that just looks like back, man. That's a scratch right there. That's a scratch right there, dude.
Awesome. Where were you just now?
I was right over here.
Alright, so, interesting. Here, there's something on Joe's channel. I wanted to pull up. Lucy, I'll be out in a minute. Lucy's scratching at the door. She's a good girl. She's about to, she's about to bust open the door. Alright, right at the beginning of this, there's an EVP, and then maybe, I can't remember where the other one is. There's another one in here. It's a woman saying, "I hope you like it." So check it out. It's really faint. I'm gonna run this through Mixcraft and bring it up so everyone can hear it, but see if you can hear it right here. It goes, it's like, "I hope you like it," like right as it starts. You can really hear the "like it." So, I don't know what noise suppression you're using, Joe Vital, or if it's part of the camera, like if the Sony camera has it built in, like if it's built in, but it makes it sound like there's voices all the time, some clearer than others. This is one of the clearest ones. I'm gonna bring up Mixcraft right now. We're gonna run it through this piece, and we are going to keep it lit. Alright, let's go. How, alright, so here, I'm just gonna, I want y'all to see it, or hit and record, boom, play. Alright, and then stop. Stop. JP, no one cares about your 587? No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, JP, I'm kidding. Alright, so let's put the filtration on it. Alright, let's see what it sounds like. Alright, it's too much filtration. Alright, let's actually, let's detect the noise. Alright, so here, here's the issue. We need a, we need a section without the EVP in it. Let's, uh... Alright, let's, oh, darn it. Let's try that again. No, let's cut out some of this. I know this is, this is boring, but it'll be worth it. Just wait. Just wait. No! Darn it! That's one thing that drives me crazy. If you hit the spacebar, if you hit the frickin' spacebar, it's all over. You can really hear the "like it." Oh, there we go. There we go. Alright, now what we do is we boost that part of the EVP, which allows us to do more filtration, even though it's kinda unnecessary at this point. Alright, and then once you bring back in the original, guys, I know this is kinda boring, but this is how I do the filtration. You can really hear it. I hope you're seeing what I'm saying. I don't know. It just blows me away that that voice is on his camera. There's a bunch of them. I hope you're seeing what I'm saying, I don't know, it just blows me away that that voice is on his camera, there's a bunch of them, there's a bunch of them. There's another one in here somewhere. There's one right there, but I'm not even gonna mess with it, but it's like- It, it sounds like they farted. Right in there.
So we're just kinda chilling, well, that was weird, it looked like a bug just stopped in midair.
Really?
Yeah, it did. I guess. Man. That was a demon, totally demon. Fuck, man. That was a demon, totally demon. Chip, sorry.
Be careful, it sounds like be care. Do you hear that?
Chip, sorry.
Do you hear that? That's clear.
Chip, sorry. Trying to get your balloon in the picture.
Ooh. Talk with me. Do you hear that? Alright, we're gonna start, well, we're gonna do the filtering again here. Arm, record, play. Alright, and then Alex starts talking, alright, let's do this, now. Let's uh- Let's move this up. Boom. Copy. Poste, alright. Are they not lined up? Do you hear that? It says "talk with me." Alright, we need to get some of the high end back in there. Alright, let's, let's uh- You know, let's- Let's put that back in, actually. Let's duplicate the track. Mute that one, and then, we have our own for this section. Lower that, actually, we'll re- We'll resample the noise from the beginning here. Alright, that's good. Get all the low end out. Talk with me, that's so awesome. Alright, that doesn't need to be amplified a bunch. That's crazy. Let's lower some of that. Alright, now I see why it was filtered, okay. Alright, now it's bringing out, back the original. It's so clear. That's crazy, that's crazy, I just wanted to show that, let's see, save as, what's the title? Oh, what's the title? Short investigation inhales bar damn by Truth Paranormal, AKA Joe Vital. Alright, so guys, for the evidence review portion, that can't be right. Guys, something, like, my encoder is saying that I'm only using 200 kilobits per second to do this stream, and there's, that's- Not possible. It's not possible. Alright guys, so, do you all- As you can see Vanessa's back there. I'm gonna share a little bit of information and then ask you all a question, okay? What's up Kenneth? Last night, I went to grab Vanessa. And I was gonna change the way she was, cuz she was like kinda looking down, she was standing, her eyes have been intense lately as it is, when I went to grab her, my body reacted in like fear or panic, like, when I went to grab her, my body was like, no, like, like you touched something hot, my body instinctually reacted to jump back from her as I was gonna grab her, no mental thought about it, nothing like that, and as soon as it happened, all my bones, I could feel the heebie-jeebies, like, through all my bones, like- So, I was like, look Vanessa, I don't know what's going on, but we'll talk tomorrow, like, and then, today I was able to overcome that and pick her up and move her, but- Something- Well, what was that? Something- Has gotten into her. And guys, for those of you who are new and don't know, this doll is named Vanessa, she told us her name herself on one of our very active, one of the most active live streams we had in the basement, she came through and said her name was Vanessa, and I got it wrong at one point, and she corrected me, saying Vanessa. What, Owen, an advertisement just popped up during the stream? Like a video ad? That can't be right. Huh. I'm gonna have to look at the settings. Yet, so guys, Vanessa's going through something, and maybe like, you know how I went through something, maybe she was going through it too, and I haven't done anything to help her besides have her at the cleansings, but like, I haven't cleansed her specifically. Do you all, would you all, let me, just, just by a show of absolute lit-ness, do you all wanna do a session right now with Vanessa and see what's going on with her? I know we've been going for two hours, wow, we've been going for two hours, but man, we can, if you want it, if you think it'd be helpful, if, if you feel you can put forth the energy to help Vanessa out, do you all wanna do a session real quick? I think it might be the right move. Guys, I'm telling you, when I went to grab her, something in me was like, no, no. It made my body react, like- Uh, it was so weird, it was- I don't know, it was like my nerves acted on their own, they like reacted on their own. So- She looks not as intense as she did the past few nights, which is good. She looked real intense. Mendelit, what's up Mendelit, you wanna see the sesh? We can do a session real quick. Owen, alright, I can, I can do it, I can make it happen. G-Man, what up G-Man? Alright, let's get a session going, let's get a session going. So, for this, I'm actually gonna use Jane's Gateway, and Jane, the final, the final part for it, uh, should be here within two to three days tops, like- And then it'll be ready to send out, I will have to do like, final testing, but I can do that like, within the next couple days. Alright, let's do it, let's make it happen. Summer Lit Girl, you made it, what's up Summer?
Alright, let's go, let's go. Ooh, I'm getting that, I'm getting that feeling, like approaching her, I'm getting that like, ooh. You okay? Vanessa, we're gonna use the new gateway, this is the clearest one yet. Vanessa, I want you to tell me, I wanna make contact, direct contact, and I want you to tell me if there's something bothering you. Alright, this gateway is, it has a lot of initial noise. Hear all that? Do you hear, that, that's the ion box, the most powerful portable ion box available, plus the lights, the lights are running through the same power pack, so, and it creates a frequency, like a vibration, on the gateway, which is real intense, it makes it real intense. Whoa. It's making crazy noises. Oh, oh! Messed that up. Where did that go? What just happened? Guys, the tuner- Just disappeared. What the heck? What just happened? I'm tripping out over here, Vanessa, where you going? It couldn't have gone this far. What in the world? Are you kidding me? The tuner is gone. Whoa, it's on the table. I'm gonna have to watch the replay of that and see what happened, it's on the frickin' table. Alright, Vanessa, this session's for you. Whoa.
Can y'all hear it? Vanessa, if you didn't hear me right now, can you say Vanessa? Say hi Lori right there? Vanessa, are you okay? I guess I can sit down, ooh. What's up Randy Paranormal? What's up Kim White? Whoa. Weird noises. Alright, yeah, that's coming through pretty loud, isn't it? Maybe a little too loud? Vanessa. Do you feel something dark around you? When I went to grab you last night, I was trying to put you in a better position, you were kinda leaned over, and I felt some kinda terrible energy. It was so intense, it was so intense, that I literally jumped back without even thinking about it. Vanessa, you look kinda distant. Guys, so, part of the reason I base some, base different things off her facial expression is because it changes, and we have it, we have it changing on a live stream, we have our face changing. So, I know, I know that that's one way shit, whoa. Did her eyes get bigger or blacker? Vanessa, are you okay? Do you like the new gateway? Vanessa. Can you let me know if there's something you need, right now, through the gateway? What's up Jason? Here, I'm gonna set this beside you. Don, searching truth, what up Don? Alright, Vanessa, I'm gonna let you talk for a second to the Epic fam. I'm gonna send that back. Is there something you wanna tell the Epic family? Alright guys, I'm going to... Vanessa, what's your favorite color? Vanessa, are you having trouble coming through? Who's here with us right now? Allison. So guys, as you all know, Jane and Allison make up Paranormal Voice, and this gateway has said the name Allison more than any other name or anything. It has said Allison a bunch. Is this Ed? If it's Ed, Ed, we're trying to connect with the spirit attached to this doll. That was weird. What's up, Patrick? What's up, Joey King? Alright, I think we might switch devices here. It just said Allison faintly. It sounded like, "Love you, Allison." Who's trying to reach Allison? A Pharaoh? A fair? Alright, I got some manual tune tuners here. As you all know during the last livestream, Ed, I believe it was Ed, destroyed my favorite tuner, like, it no longer works, so... It was Ed? It was Ed? Do you wanna keep using the gateway? Why is it doing that? I'm, I'm hearing the reverse, like, it... So gateway devices all have full reversal functionality, meaning the entire signal chain is completely reversed before hitting the speaker. However, we're hearing the reverse portion come through, but then we're hearing a reversal of that or the forward audio. But it doesn't happen every time. It only happens sometimes. And it didn't do this on any other, any of the other tests. This is the only test it's ever done that on. I wonder if they're trying to tell us something by that? Alright, let's switch it up. Ed, if you're here, help us connect with Vanessa. Make sure she's alright. I, I know you can tell by the look in her eyes, something's, something's going on. Vanessa, if you can hear me, can you say Vanessa loud and clear? Show him. It's a show. Alright, let's switch to FM. Can you say Vanessa loud and clear if you're here? Ed, if you can, if you can tell me if Vanessa's not here, can you say not here? I'm not, I'm not hearing much. Y'all heard Bishop? Alright, Ed, if it's you, can you say it's Ed on the device I'm holding, please? Just say it's Ed. Do you, do you have a message for someone? Weird. Alright, let's switch back. Are there any people that wish to come through the gateway device right now? Can you just give me a clear yes? If you're looking to come through? And it goes silent. Sorry? Yes. There was a clear yes. Is this Ed or Vanessa, or is this someone else looking to come through? Can you at least tell me that much? I know you want to talk. I know you wanna come through. Do you have a loved one or a family member? A sheriff? Do you have a loved one or family member you would like to reach? Someone in the Epic family? Or maybe you're trying to reach Allison and Jane. Perg Pony, what up, Perg Pony? Turn off the light? Did y'all, did y'all hear that turn off the light? We love you. Love you. There we go. Who said we love you? No. That was a clear no. Vanessa, can you tell me, do we have an operator or technician working with us tonight? Guys, the EMF sensor is in this, in the gateway, and that's what's causing the EMF meter to light up, I just wanna be clear. Just using it as a response indicator, same as this. I failed them? M City. It sounded like M City. What would make this easier for you to come through, Vanessa? Smaller box? I'm gonna get the other two ion boxes real quick. Also, they mentioned something about the light. So I'm gonna turn the light out. Is that the light you wanted turned out? You know it's a live stream. Alright. So we got, we got both of them on now. So now we got three ion boxes running right here. Do you have a message for M City, M City Angel? Do you want more of the lights out? Alright, I think we're gonna switch to manual tune here. Alright, if you're down to switch to manual tune, can you say manual? Almost sounded like I heard vape there. For a second. Alright, let's try it from this angle. Hopefully y'all can still hear it. We need help? Victoria? Yep. Vanessa, can you tell me what energy's around you? What's around you? Enoch? You've mentioned Enoch in the Book of Enoch before. Does that have something to do with this? Absolutely. Before that, it sounded like daddy's home? Vanessa, is there something you wanna tell your parents? Ed, are you the same Ed that hangs out with Jane and Allison? If so, can you say para-voice? If it's, if it's you, Ed, if it's the same Ed? Or if it's, if it's Ed Bishop, can you say Bishop? Alright, we're gonna close it out, but I'm gonna scan through Francis D. What's up, Francis? Let's do one more thing. Cause they mentioned the lights earlier. Let's see if turning all the lights out helps for some reason. Look, I'm gonna scan through a couple more times. What's your message? What are you trying to get out to me, to your loved ones, to Jane, to Allison, Vanessa? What is it? Is this Edward? Hi. Hello. I think there was a spider just crawling on me. Good God. I hope not. I feel like there was a spider crawling on my leg. Not what I'm into, though. Feel like there was a spider crawling on my leg. Not what I'm into though. Alright, one last scan, holding the antenna. What's your me- can our spirit guides, our guardians, the technicians and operators, please, for this last scan through the frequencies, give us a positive message, a message to go forward with. A message about communication, or a message about the world, or yourself, or ourselves. Alright. I wonder why that's going off constantly now? Weird. Absolutely weird. Alright guys, we're gonna close it out there. This was, overall, this was a pretty lit livestream. It was pretty lit, I'd have to say. On review, I guarantee you will probably hear a lot more. A heck of a lot more. No. I do wanna say, I absolutely love y'all. Let me turn the mic up so you can hear me. I love you guys. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being a part of it. Thank you for keeping it so incredibly lit. This has been one of the best review streams that we've had in a long time. So, guys, if you, if you review this and hear anything from this session, please timestamp it below. What's everyone saying here? G-Man, you agree? Francis D, it's all good. Pops Metal, very cool new gateway. Thank you Pops. Paranormal Voice is gonna have the best sounding gateway yet. Andrew Cox in the building. G-Man in the building. Azalal. Gin Row, what up Gin? Mary C? Hey Mary. Josie Flores. Randy Paranormal. Owen Young. Paranormal Voice. Julie Dale. Mendelit, what up Mendelit? Summer Lit Girl. Owen Young. What's up everybody? Thank you all for being here. Thank you for keeping it so lit. I love you guys. Stay awesome, stay lit, stay tuned, stay epic. And Monday, we'll be having another intense session, followed by an intense Patreon stream. So Monday is gonna be lit. I will see you guys there. Love y'all. Stay lit, stay epic.